Almighty God, we the representatives of the citizens of the city of Brisbane are assembled here to strive and care for the welfare of our city and all its people. Lord, we ask that you guide us in the decisions we make today. Amen. Brisbane City Council acknowledges this country and its traditional custodians. We acknowledge and respect the spiritual relationship between traditional custodians and this country, which has inspired language, songs, dances, lore and dreaming stories over many thousands of years. We pay our respects to the elders, those who have passed into the dreaming, those here today and those of tomorrow. May we continue to peacefully walk together in gratitude, respect and kindness in caring for this country and one another. Please be seated, I declare the meeting open. Are there any apologies? Counselor Dixon.
Chair, I move that Councillors Adams, Marks and Givney be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting.
Seconded.
It has been moved by Counselor Dixon and seconded by Counselor Adaman that Counselor Adams, Counselor Givney and Counselor Marks be granted leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Are there any further apologies?
Thank you Chair, I move that Counselor Trina Massey has an apology to say as well. Seconded.
It has been moved by Counselor Chong Wan, seconded by Counselor Johnston, that Counselor Massey be granted a leave of absence from today's meeting. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Any further apologies? Councillors, I draw your attention to the notice of motion at item two on the agenda. Lord Mayor, would you please move the motion?
Madam Chair, I move that council resolves to approve entering into a heads of agreement and funding agreement with the state of Queensland represented by the Department of Transport and Main Roads and grant a delegation for the execution of new contracts in accordance with the heads of agreement as is set out in attachment A.
Seconded.
It has been moved by the Lord Mayor and seconded by Counselor Murphy that the council resolves to approve entering into a heads of agreement and funding agreement with the state of Queensland represented by the Department of Transport and Main Roads and grant a delegation for the execution of the new contracts in accordance with the heads of agreement as set out in attachment A. Is there any debate?
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Counselor Johnston, point of order.
Madam Chair, I draw your attention to section 238.1e of the City of Brisbane Act regarding delegations. Under section 231e of COBA, delegations must be made to one of a number of authorised parties, which includes the Establishment and Coordination Committee. Neither the motion before us today nor the heads of agreement referred to refer to E and C as the properly made delegate for the decision. Therefore, the resolution before us today does not contain a proper delegation as required under the City of Brisbane Act and I ask for your ruling on whether it is a proper motion before the meeting.
Thank you Counselor Johnston, just one moment. Sorry Counselor Johnston, that is why in attachment A, it refers to attachment A that this is to approve delegation to do that. So if you look in attachment A, the issue or the purpose is to approve council into the heads of agreement with the Department of Transport and so that is required to finalise the contract to the Establishment and Coordination Committee.
Madam Chairman, I just draw your attention to the wording in the resolution before us today. It says grant a delegation, it does not say to whom, and it says in accordance with the heads of agreement set out at attachment A. I draw your attention to the heads of agreement attached at attachment A, which does not refer to the Establishment and Coordination. The parties in that contract are Brisbane City Council and the Department of Transport and Main Roads.
Point of order, Madam Chair.
Point of order Counselor Murphy.
If I can provide some information that might assist you in answering that other point of order. So, section 228 of the City of Brisbane Regulation 2012 says a delegate can only enter into a contract if budget has been provided or approved by council, either by resolution or in the budget book. Secondly, if a delegation is made to E and C, then E and C will only be able to exercise that delegation and enter into the contracts if budget has been approved.
Approved by council.
If it hasn't been approved, then the contracts would return to council for decision. So, there is plenty of opportunity and time at other meetings of council for us to deal with the budget element of this delegation. So it's not relevant today. Counselor Johnston's point of order.
Counselor Johnston, I hope that answers your inquiry.
Point of order, Madam Chairman.
Point of order Counselor Johnston.
Thank you Madam Chairman, my question is not about budget. My issue, and you may want to seek some advice on this Madam Chairman, is that the motion put forward by the Lord Mayor and Counselor Murphy today does not correctly delegate power to the E and C committee under the motion before us today. Neither in the motion nor in the heads of agreement is E and C referred to and under section 238 of the City of Brisbane Act, a delegation must be made to one of the five authorised people to whom delegations can be made and that is not either in the motion nor in the heads of agreement.
Thank you Counselor Johnston, I actually, I don't uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor.
It's right here, attachment one, it refers to E and C. If Counselor Johnston would read the documents properly, it is right there. This was not drafted by the Lord Mayor's office, this was drafted by Brisbane City Legal Practice.
Counselor Johnston, point of order.
The attachment the Lord Mayor is referring to is the E and C report, that is not part of the motion being put forward today and Madam Chairman, I urge you to seek legal advice. If this contract is not executed appropriately and the delegations are not executed appropriately, they have no force.
Thank you, thank you Counselor Johnson, I've already made my ruling on your point of order and we are moving on, thank you.
And Madam Chairman, can I just urge you again to seek legal advice to make sure this is done properly.
Thank you Counselor Johnson, I do not uphold your point of order. Lord Mayor.
Point of order, Madam Chairman, I move dissent in your ruling and I'd appreciate it.
Seconded.
Dissent in my ruling has been moved by Counselor Johnston and seconded by Counselor Griffiths. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no.
No.
The motion, that is lost, thank you.
Division.
Division has been called by Counselor Johnston and seconded by Counselor Griffiths. All those in favour to my right and those against to my left.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it, the voting being seven in favour and 16 against.
Motion is lost. Please be seated Councillors.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, to quote the words of the Queensland Premier, this is a big deal for Brisbane. And they were his words and they're words that I concur with. Because what we have now is, for the first time in over a decade, an acknowledgement from the state government that more funding is needed from them to match our funding increases for public transport. What we also have here as well is an acknowledgement that the Brisbane Metro, we knew it was a council and federal funded project for many, many years, is now a council, state and federal funded project. It is now a project that is supported by all three levels of government and that is in addition to the independent assessment of Infrastructure Australia, that is in addition to the support of advocates like Rail Back On Track, that is in addition to the support of Engineers Australia, that is in addition to the support of RACQ and so many other experts and people that have a view on transport. And so now, today, we are talking about the opportunity for this to go forward as a true joint project. It's the way it should have always been, but we accept from a long history of dealing with state governments that things don't always start the way they should, but most of the time they eventually end up the way they should. And whether it was the busways to start off with, which were originally proposed by Brisbane City Council and then became a state government project, whether it was Airport Link, which was originally proposed by Brisbane City Council and then became a state government project, or whether it was the Chermside Bypass Tunnel, which was originally proposed by Brisbane City Council and has now rightly become a state government project. And so Brisbane Metro now will become a joint project. But more importantly, there's an acknowledgement that the state's funding increases have lagged over time and they have not kept pace with either the growth of the city or the cost of providing those services. And so on both counts, the funding has lagged and we see a way forward to rectify that situation. And what we see today is an agreement that will see an initial $75 million rectification payment made. And I say rectification because it gets us close to where we should be, but most importantly it signs up to a set of principles going forward so that future contracts between the state government and Brisbane City Council will have things in them that they should have in the past but unfortunately have not. Now, under our project deed with the state government for Brisbane Metro, we're required to negotiate a new bus contract with Translink. And that was their requirement on us, that was not our request, that was their requirement. And as part of these negotiations, we've been working to secure more funding from the state government for Brisbane's bus services, not just Brisbane Metro, but all bus services. State government's funding for buses has been capped at inflation over a decade and at the same time, council's investment has doubled. Compare the pair. The items before us today contain the detail of a new deal for buses in Brisbane. This deal will see significant upfront investment in public transport by the state government to match our upfront investment to keep Brisbane moving. It also locks in a long-term agreement between council and the state to deliver more, better and more reliable, fast and frequent services to more areas. We're extremely proud to have secured this outcome with the state government and this is ultimately, not a win for the council, it's a win for Brisbane residents. It's a win for everyone, whether they use public transport or not. Certainly a win for those who use public transport, but it's a win for anyone who moves around our city because we know that a critical way to respond to growing traffic congestion is to boost public transport and active transport. And we have what is in front of us today is a deal that does exactly that, boosts public transport and it provides a mass transit solution with Brisbane Metro. Two key documents are now included in this submission, a funding agreement and a heads of agreement. The funding agreement provides the $75 million in additional funding for bus services that I mentioned before and this funding is for the current contract and will be paid this financial year. The heads of agreement commit state and council to the key principles of a new contract. And so $75 million in the current contract and then a way forward for the new contract. This means we can now work to finalise a new contract with certainty about the terms that each party will need to meet. Key elements of the deal, the contract term, a new bus contract will have a five-year term with two one-year extension options. $75 million in funding this year under the current contract, under a new contract, all services would be funded on a 75%, 25% council basis. Now, this is important because there are a number of services that don't have that mix of funding. Now, we saw in the past, state and council funding was around that 75-25 mix and progressively over time, council has invested more, state government hasn't, and the funding mix is now heading to the point where it was heading towards 50-50 funding. And so we're now in the 60-40 realm, this rectifies it, gets it back to 25-75, but it also deals with some of the outstanding issues. And I talk about the city gliders, in particular, you know, these are some of the most popular routes in the city. They generate not only a lot of trips, but a lot of fare revenue from the state government. The Morone City Glider is virtually fully funded by Brisbane City Council and the state government pockets $2 million a year in revenue, not a cent of which they pay back. And so this rectifies that issue. And so it's a more equitable arrangement, it's a more reasonable arrangement and it acknowledges that, you know, we have our role to play and we are playing that role. And unlike any other council, we're putting in 25% of the funding for bus services. Why? Because we expect better and more bus services than other council areas have. Why? Because we fund that when other councils don't. And so this sets us up in that respect going forward. This agreement provides for Brisbane Metro to commence later on this year and also not only M1 and M2, the first two routes of Brisbane Metro, or the first two lines, but also an early introduction of the metro vehicles on the Route 169, which is between Eight Mile Plains and the University of Queensland. So, and that will happen in October, so not in December, but in October. That's a really exciting thing from my perspective and I know it'll be exciting for all of the people that have been eagerly waiting to catch the very first metro services. And one of those people who has been eagerly waiting is Bart Mellish, Minister Mellish. And he said on the day, on Monday, he said, "I look forward to catching the very first Brisbane metro service" and we look forward to having him aboard. Someone's yawning, someone thinks this is not important, someone is disappointed that their state labour colleagues have seen the light and put more money into Brisbane transport. I suspect that that same someone will continue to criticise and oppose Brisbane Metro, just in the way that they have for multiple elections. That is disappointing, but sadly irrelevant, is sadly irrelevant. It's been irrelevant until now and it's even more irrelevant with this agreement. It's irrelevant because the Premier backs Brisbane Metro and it's irrelevant because the Minister for Transport backs Brisbane Metro. But Counselor Cassidy can yawn all he likes, this is an exciting thing for Brisbane. This deal also includes bus network improvements, an agreement to undertake regular reviews of the bus network to add capacity where needed. It includes bus priority measures, it includes a true partnership where we make decisions together and it provides support for the 50-cent fares initiative that the state government is introducing. I commend this to the chamber.
Lord Mayor, your time has expired.
Move an extension?
Seconded. It has been moved by Counselor Wines and seconded by Counselor Dixon to move for an extension. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no. The ayes have it. Lord Mayor.
Well, if you insist, Counselor Wines. 50-cent fares, now, this is something obviously that we welcome, the 50-cent fares, and we have welcomed it from the beginning, but we have, like many people, had concerns about what it would do to the bus services that are already full or near full. Now, an interesting bit of information that will give you some perspective, there are some people who say, "Well, patronage hasn't recovered to pre-COVID levels yet, so it's not going to be a problem." Already, at least 25% of all of our services have not only recovered to pre-COVID levels, they've exceeded pre-COVID levels. So those services have already surpassed the pre-COVID levels, they are popular, they are being well used and these 25% of services are the ones that would be under massive pressure with 50-cent fares. And so if they're already full or near full, can you imagine what would happen if there's extra demand? And so that's exactly what Counselor Murphy rightly raised in recent weeks and he raised a really good point and it was one that the state government acknowledged and as part of this agreement, we can now work together to supplement services right from the introduction of 50-cent fares. So, the initial investment in services won't just come in October when metro services start, they won't come in December when the full metro line one and two are up and running, it will be August when 50-cent fares come in place. And so there'll be extra services developed in partnership with the state government at that time to make sure that 50-cent fares are a success. So we've got the government's back on 50-cent fares, they didn't consult us about it, but we're happy to help because we want to see this be a success as well. We want to see more people on public transport and this is a great way to test the waters on how a price signal will make changes to demand for public transport. So, this particular deal achieves many things, but most importantly, it achieves a level of cooperation that we haven't seen before. A level of cooperation which certainly hasn't existed with, you know, the government until this point and I've got to say, didn't exist under previous governments as well. And so I want to finish by a personal thanks. Personal thanks to Premier Stephen Miles. Now, the Premier has been really upfront with us about this process, he has been true to his word. He told us that he was committed to improving public transport in Brisbane, he told us that he was committed to working with us and that is exactly what he has done. And I have no doubt that without his personal intervention, this would not have happened. And so from me, from Counselor Murphy, and I know from all of my colleagues, I want to thank the Premier for the way in which he's approached this negotiation and also that he's been true to his word on this issue, which is really, really important for Brisbane. And so I'll end where I started, this is a big deal for Brisbane and it's a wonderful thing and once again, thanks to Premier Stephen Miles.
Further speakers, Counselor Cassidy.
Thanks very much, I rise to speak on this delegation. Not a deal, not an agreement, not funding, but a delegation, a broad delegation in fact, to anyone apparently. And what we've seen, what we're seeing here today from the Lord Mayor and what we've seen from this council is the end of a panicked approach, I think, from this administration, from this LMP regime here in Brisbane. We saw a short, yet deceitful political campaign of which the LMP geared the Brisbane City Council up into a political campaigning machine using public funds to achieve the outcome that they needed, but I'm not sure it's the outcome that the people of Brisbane needed. We've heard from the Lord Mayor, he thinks the state government came and saved the day for council and he thinks this is a good deal for council, I'm not sure about that. Reading through this, I understand it's a very good deal for the Queensland government, I'm not sure it's a great deal for council and most importantly, a great deal for people seeking to catch a council bus out in the outer suburbs of Brisbane. The Lord Mayor gave some examples about how previous councils and previous Lord Mayors were able to get the state government to do things that they wanted. And there are some great examples, he talked about Jim Sawley getting the state government to pay for the busways. He said it was a council idea, the state government then paid 100% of the cost to build those busways, of which these new metro buses will be rolling down, they've been a raging success for the last 30 years. In fact, some of the most successful busways anywhere in the world operate here in Brisbane and the Lord Mayor's right, Lord Mayor Jim Sawley got the state government to pay for that. He referred to the Airport Link Tunnel, Campbell Newman I believe was the Lord Mayor, got the state government to pay for that tunnel 100% of the cost. And what we've had under this Lord Mayor is a project on, a state government project on a state government asset that's cost the ratepayers of Brisbane $1.5 billion. And now he says it's now some sort of joint project as of today, it's a joint black hole. So not only are the taxpayers of Australia, the taxpayers of Queensland and the ratepayers of Brisbane now expected to pick up the cost, not just of the construction of this metro system, but also now the operation of the most expensive buses anywhere in the world to operate for what they deliver, the most expensive anywhere in the world. So, we do, we do accept some of the outcomes of what we have seen publicly reported here, particularly boosting services, boosting the number of services on existing routes, that is a good thing. But I think the deal, and talking about the increased demand that the Lord Mayor talked about on busy routes already and we know that globally, you know, we can expect, going on global figures, expect an up to 30% increase in patronage. So those services are already full, absolutely they need more services on them, they need more buses on them, more frequency to carry more people. But the rest of this deal is actually really quite underwhelming. What this Lord Mayor was able to secure is extremely underwhelming. That funding is essential, our bus funding is essential to support bus drivers who are doing all that heavy lifting, the implementation of the 50-cent fares as we've heard about and general bus services. But given we don't have the deal in front of us today, what will be the final deal anyway, and the fine print of that, I'm not sure that we could really trust this Lord Mayor to roll out this bus funding agreement because we remember who was in charge of negotiating the last bus funding agreement that Brisbane City Council entered into and this Lord Mayor said was trash. Oh, that's right, it was him! He did it! He was the guy that was in charge of negotiating that agreement, which was a 75-25% split. You'll remember that, Lord Mayor, you'll remember negotiating that with Mark Bailey as the minister, you probably praised him at the time as well. He, this Lord Mayor's the one that secured that deal back then, that 75-25% deal and held that as a good deal for the people of Brisbane because he negotiated it himself, personally. And we're expected to just accept that this deal of which the Lord Mayor and his LMP colleagues will get to sign off on is going to be a great deal too. We don't trust this Lord Mayor. And we're not, we're not voting on this deal anyway today, the Lord Mayor might have councillors believe that, but what we are voting on is this, is this delegation. And I can't believe that the Lord Mayor would walk in here and think that, you know, you could sort of say this is a great deal and it's something more than what was secured back in 2019, five years ago, when it's exactly the same deal that was secured back then. And his administration, since the day he became Lord Mayor, has failed the people of Brisbane to get the Queensland government to pay its fair share. That's his admission today, that he failed monumentally as a negotiator back in 2019 and he failed monumentally as a Lord Mayor over the last five years in getting adequate funding to the Brisbane City Council for the provision of bus services. So you'd think from over the last week and particularly today, all the bluff and bluster that we've heard from this so-called historic deal from the Lord Mayor and after the Lord Mayor geared up council into a political campaigning operation, that we would see an amazing deal that would roll out all these new services around suburban Brisbane because as we know, 66% of the people living in Brisbane, in suburban Brisbane, don't have adequate connections to and access to public transport services. You'd think that's what the Lord Mayor will be announcing today, but no, he folded like a deck of cards in those negotiations. He rolled over and accepted what was given to him, he accepted an agreement, a continuation essentially, apart from a bit of tinkering around the edges, of an agreement that existed back in 2019. There's not that much that is new here. So after all the blaming and complaining we've heard from the Lord Mayor and from Counselor Murphy over the last few months about how a 75-25% deal, which they negotiated, wasn't enough, we see them accepting that again. So I guess if you've got a part-time Lord Mayor, if you've got a part-time LMP council, you get a part-time you get a part-time result. And that's what the people of Brisbane have been lumped with now. So we know that the Lord Mayor said one, one route, one route of the Brisbane Metro will be rolled out in October, the 169, the most expensive bus route anywhere in the world. You'd also think that, well, I, I saw this figure where, where I think it was councillor Murphy claimed that the metro would increase patronage by an addition, this deal would increase patronage by an additional 30 million passengers, over and above. What we know is what this deal is rolling out is this one metro route in October, then a few more over the next few months. And they're replacing buses that currently seat 50 to 90 people with buses that carry 170 people, most of which will be standing for that journey. So this isn't, this is, this is an increase in patronage, not denying that, but this isn't some sort of people's revolution on the busway. Let's not kid ourselves. We know the operational costs for the metro far exceed the funding of which council had available for public transport in its entirety in Brisbane. So of course council needed to get a deal, and the Lord Mayor settled for any deal that he could, to roll out one, one bus, to roll out one bus route, the 169, from October. And in fact, what we do know is that most people, most residents, most people who travel on the bus network already will be worse off when it comes to public transport connections because of the Brisbane Metro. And we find out today apparently that the bus network review, which did include northside routes previously, that's been shelved and it's just a southside review now, and there's a sort of vague commitment for a northside review, but nothing that is set in stone. Nothing that is set in stone whatsoever. And why would there be, when you look at the deal that the Lord Mayor inked, why would there be? Because there is no extra funding for new routes out in the suburbs of Brisbane. He begged and begged and begged the state government to bail him out on the operational costs of the metro because they were so scandalously and hideously expensive, that he has sacrificed bus routes in the suburbs of Brisbane. And I know, talking to councillor Strunk, and I'm sure you'll talk about this, that one of those suburban bus routes will lose a number of stops, which means that people in an aging suburb will have to now walk more than 400 metres to catch a bus. In other words, we know that users will have to catch multiple buses instead of a single-seat journey. Now, you know, that might be a sacrifice that some people are willing to make, but when we're talking about sacrificing more suburban services just to get that money onto the busway.
Councillor Cassidy, your time has expired. Point of order.
I'll move an extension.
Second.
It has been moved by councillor Colly and seconded by councillor Strunk for a movement, an extension of time. All those in favour say aye.
Aye.
Those against no, the ayes have it. Councillor Cassidy.
Thank you, Chair. So 20 routes, and this is, this is what was previously publicly announced, it obviously all could change, but 20 routes will be truncated, cancelled, or merged with others as a result of these metro services starting where more people can stand for longer on buses. So what we, what we see and what we know here is that the Lord Mayor spent a very, very long time complaining about funding levels for council buses, for the 1,200 buses that we run across the thousands and thousands of services carrying millions and millions of people, tens of millions of people, complained bitterly that there wasn't enough growth funding for new routes. And when he walked out of the premier's office, having done this deal, he accepted no money for new routes. That's basically what we've got before us today. What an absolute dud deal this Lord Mayor got for the people of Brisbane. And we know why, we know why, it's been well, well litigated, I think, in here, that there's no growth funding because that the operational costs of, of metro services are making that the most expensive bus network, the smallest yet most expensive bus network anywhere in the world. And as we read on the same day, I think it was the same day, it was a report out that the Lord Mayor had inked his deal with the premier, a climate council report revealed, or references earlier, that there were, Brisbane is the worst capital city in the country for access to public transport. It said that 66% of the city is completely cut off from accessing public transport on a regular basis. Now, you think you'd get that kind of statistic, and you would say, okay, what, what we clearly need as a city of suburbs, a city of 190 suburbs, is increased funding for more routes out in the suburbs of Brisbane, more frequency, more access, more bus stops, more access to those bus stops, including footpaths and bikeways. But what we've had is the Lord Mayor begging for operational, metro operational funding, which he received, a pretty good deal for the state government, a pretty bad deal for the people of Brisbane. And on top of that, he's cut funding for footpath and bikeway projects out in the suburbs of Brisbane as well. So this is not a, not a great day for the people of Brisbane, this shouldn't be a proud day for the Lord Mayor. We should all be, we should all be embarrassed for him, for this deal of which he has done. Because pouring more money into the metro is obviously required because it otherwise would have sent council broke, and that would have been a bigger mess for the state government to clean up. So I get that had to be done. But for the Lord Mayor to just have folded as easily as he did in not securing more suburban route funding is an embarrassment. You know, this council, for a very long time, through their actions, and, and they have sometimes been small and sometimes been big, have been ignoring the people of Brisbane. It's now so extraordinary that we have the Lord Mayor coming in here, and what should be one of the biggest deals that council has secured, has confirmed that the suburbs don't matter. The optics of securing a deal to open the metro, which has been dragging on now since January 2016, were more important. The politics for the Lord Mayor was more important than the outcome of this deal. We heard it just here now, for him to be able to stand up and say he's the great negotiator, and he got this deal because he talked directly with the premier, was more important to him than the outcome of what that deal will deliver in the suburbs of Brisbane. And that's the, that's the really big, big disappointment. It's a, it's a, yeah, it's a triumph of politics over policy. It's a triumph of spin over substance in absolutely every sense, this deal. We, we are looking forward to the metro project being completed because it has been the biggest black hole this council has faced, and the ratepayers of Brisbane. And communities have missed out for so long, it's unfortunate they're going to continue to be missed out because of the ongoing operational costs of this, the most expensive bus routes and most expensive bus network anywhere in the world. At least now it is a joint black hole, I guess, in the Lord Mayor's words, a joint black hole between council, state, and the federal government. And to, to finish up, I am, I am glad that the state government bailed council out because council to have gone entirely broke would have been more embarrassing, I guess, than the Lord Mayor's poor negotiating skills. But the lack of investment through this deal in suburban bus routes is terrible, it should be scandalous, and it is hideous for the people of Brisbane. And I think finally, the, the final good news out of the deal, there's a couple, a couple of points, as I said, we do support, final good news is there's much more transparency and accountability from TransLink on what this administration does in transport for Brisbane. And if that funding deal is now locked in, rather than it being able to slip like it has on this Lord Mayor's watch so badly, that there may be some hope in the future for suburban routes once the operational costs of the metro are absorbed. But, you know, without seeing the deal, Chair, all we have today is a special meeting for a delegation. It's very difficult to make that call for councillors in here, extremely difficult to make that call because we don't know, we don't know what's in the final deal, we don't know what's in the final bus review, we don't know which routes are going to be serviced by metro vehicles, we don't know when the northside review is going to happen, we don't know whether that review will include the shifting of the terminus at Turnbull Shopping Centre to somewhere like Northgate. We, we don't know all these things, so how can we be expected to endorse ENC, which is a secretive LNP committee, to make these decisions on behalf of all the people of Brisbane? That's, that's the conundrum here. We know that, you know, you're all rubber stamps. We know that. You've demonstrated that on that side of the chamber, every single one of you. Just say, Lord Mayor says to jump, and you will say, how high? You don't question things, but it is difficult for councillors that do question these deals and do have concerns about the services that we deliver for the people of Brisbane. And this, finally, reminds me again of what the Lord Mayor said, I think three or four weeks ago, that in his estimation, you need to make a decision between building infrastructure in the inner city or delivering services in the suburbs of Brisbane. And again, he has made his choice really clear with this deal in focusing on the inner city rather than the suburbs of Brisbane.
Thank you, councillors. I wish to acknowledge former councillor for MacDale, Ward, Norm Wyndham, in the gallery today, and welcome him. Further speakers. Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I also rise in support of this resolution. And as the Lord Mayor has already said, this is indeed a big deal for Brisbane. A deal that will benefit Brisbane ratepayers, residents, and South East Queensland commuters alike. A deal that demonstrates what can be achieved when all levels of government work together. A deal that will keep Brisbane moving now and into the future. The Shrima Council is making record investment in public transport to deliver additional services where they need it most. Indeed, Brisbane is the only local government in Queensland that helps subsidise public transport services to this level. Our investment has doubled over the past decade. We've introduced the blue and maroon city gliders and made off-peak travel free for seniors. I was only chatting to some senior residents yesterday who told me how much they love the free off-peak travel and how it helps get them out and about. We also heavily subsidise Brisbane City Cat and Ferry Services, and of course, there's our significant capital investment to deliver the Brisbane Metro project.
One moment, please, councillor Parry. Councillors on both sides, there is a lot of chatter going on. Could you please take it outside if you need to have those conversations? Councillor Parry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And we on this side of the chamber, we love the Brisbane Metro. The fully electric, high-capacity metro gives us greater flexibility to deliver more services more often, particularly during peak times. It represents a $1.55 billion investment by council into public transport. In addition to the electric buses, the metro delivers a new depot and major infrastructure works, benefiting busway assets to improve capacity and travel times. But under the current deal, Brisbane residents stump up all the cash, and the state government pockets the fair revenue, and will retain the majority of the capital assets constructed by the project. At the heart of the negotiations for a new funding contract between Brisbane City Council and the Queensland government is fairness. Under the current contract, through you, Madam Chair, is it fair that Brisbane ratepayers are being short-changed by the state government? Is it fair that Brisbane residents have 82,000 fewer funded bus services than we did 10 years ago? And is it fair that $150 million in taxpayer funds would be wasted on a 50-cent fare trial that was doomed to fail without the proper investment? No, it isn't. Through you, Madam Chair, is it fair that two-thirds of public transport users or 200,000 passengers per day in Brisbane being forgotten about? Is it fair that a cloud of uncertainty hung over the future transport lengths of our city, heading into the biggest event on earth, the Olympics in 2032? Is it fair that council had to pay for Brisbane Metro services without the right to retain the revenue generated by that service and to not even be allowed to commence the services until the contract was signed? No, no, it isn't. And it's evidence, evident from the funding agreement and heads of agreement before us today, we aren't the only ones who think so. Premier Stephen Miles thinks so too. What we are looking at today is a true partnership between Brisbane City Council and the Queensland state government, a 75-25 split between the state and us. It provides a fairer funding deal and is a long-term commitment to public transport in our city. The deal gives us certainty for the future of Brisbane's buses. It allows us to commence Brisbane Metro sooner. It enables us to make bus network improvements, prioritise key routes, provide additional support for 50-cent fares, and work hand-in-hand with the state government to cater for growth and better plan for 2032. On a personal note, I'm thrilled that one of the terms of the agreement before us is a review of the northside bus network. This has clearly been made a priority and will be completed by June next year. Congestion's pretty bad on my side of town, and while, while there are some big-ticket infrastructure projects being explored, we know that to tackle congestion, we need our public transport network to be reliable and efficient. A comprehensive review focused on the northside will enable us to add capacity where needed, reduce duplication, and improve bus-to-rail connections. We've already undertaken an award-winning consultation process as part of our current network review, a process TransLink described as 'setting a new benchmark for community consultation'. This included more than 30 community info sessions, pop-up stalls across the city, and an online survey. We developed the first interactive map of Brisbane's bus network so residents could clearly see the changes, enter their address to see services nearby, and learn about why we have proposed the changes for each route. This review focused on the southeast of the city to enable Metro One and Metro Two to commence. But we heard from that process that residents in other parts of Brisbane, particularly on the northside, the far north side, are ready for better bus services too, and I wholeheartedly agree. That's why we proposed Metro to the north and have committed to build the depot. Completing a northside review is the next step in making, in taking Metro to the northside, sorry, making Metro to the northside a reality, and improving public transport connectivity and reliability for residents in this part of the city. In addition to this, a commitment to work collaboratively towards on-road bus priority for projects like the Northern Transitway Corridor is a real win for the northern suburbs of Brisbane. This will ensure the network grows as the city grows. Importantly, it will help to encourage more people to get out of their cars and onto a bus that has arrived, with the capacity to get them to where they want to go and, and at a time they want to arrive. Madam Chair, in closing, I'd like to sum up by saying what's before, what's before us today represents a genuine win for Brisbane public transport users, and especially for Brisbane ratepayers. The agreement not only provides more funding for bus services, but it also provides certainty into the future. It allows us to start metro services sooner, review and enhance our existing bus network, and will help enable 50-cent fares to be a success. This agreement shows what can be achieved when different levels of government work collaboratively to achieve a common goal. It also shows what can be achieved when you stick to your guns, show a bit of ticker, and don't accept the first offer. It's a fair deal, it's a good deal, it's a big deal for Brisbane, and I commend it to the chamber.
Further speakers. Councillor Strunk.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. Well, the metro blind date with the people of Brisbane is finally going to be consummated in October of this year, and what a journey it has been. Right from 2015, when the thought bubble happened with the former Lord Mayor and his campaign team of $944 million for an underground metro, let's not forget that one, like the French underground, and then it has turned out to be one point, as councillor Murphy said, it was always going to be $1.5 million or billion dollars. And I listened to that radio show, and that, and I was really disappointed that someone didn't pick him up on that one, because that's not the history of metro. And, and who knows what it's going to turn out to be, because there's, there's still an, there's still an interchange that hasn't been built yet, which was supposed to cost, what, 400 million? 400 million? Extraordinary amount of money, anyways. So, but the metro, as, as my, as my residents have, have been telling me since, since the first time metro was rolled out as a concept, and, and they found out what it wasn't going to do for them, there was no, going to be no, no commitment to the western suburbs, right? There were some hairy-fairy things saying, oh, there's going to be extra routes and all the rest of it. Well, the bus review is, is turned out to be not the case, at least into my ward anyways, and, and Emily Kim's ward as well, Callum Vale. So it's really disappointing that this, this bus review is going to really not, not do anything, if anything, it's actually going to reduce the services in my ward, especially in the Anala area, as, as, as my leader stated during his speech, right? That the, the 122, of course, is, is going to be taken away from the, the streets of Centaurus, Boots, I don't know, and, and Draninis, and Myra Streets, and Virgo Streets as well. And what's going to happen, what's going to happen there is the people that live in those streets, where there's a, there is a bus route on, along those streets, they're going to actually have to walk between 400 and 100 metres to, to get to the, to get to the service that will take them where they need to go. to get to the service that will take them where they need to go. And I said when they came out and gave us a briefing on this that this was going to be an issue because most of the people in these streets are of an age, I won't call them old, senior, they're of an age where their mobility is not as good as it was maybe 20 or 30 years ago when they first started using this service. And some of them, of course, are using walkers and all sorts of things to try to get to the bus stop now, which is maybe only 20 to 30 metres from their house, because it's a really good service. And the other thing that turned out, that was talked about during the briefing today by Councillor Murphy, was the focus that this administration has on trying to establish more routes and more frequency to the railway station, right? Which makes sense, because there is plenty of capacity on the railway as well that isn't being met. And it's really important that we try to get as many cars off the road as we can and get people, and of course, it's a lot more environmentally friendly if they can actually take a train or a bus, of course, instead of their passenger vehicles. And the new, the bus review doesn't really deal with that at all, right? And if this is a focus by this council to enable more routes and more connectivity to the railway stations, well, you're not doing it. You're not advocating. I haven't really heard. I heard it in the briefing today from Councillor Murphy, and I applaud that, right? But, you know, it's no good to talk about things, you've actually got to do something about it. And actually really advocate with TransLink to do that. Now, the 1110 is going to be another issue, which is going to finish at the PA hospital, so it's a broken journey for those people who used to travel into the city to various bus stops in the city as well, which will be closed down as well, because the metro will be replacing that in most cases. And so there's about a half a dozen actually bus stops in the city here, or sorry, from South Brisbane into the city that they're actually going to not be able to get to their desired their desired location as to where they want to go because they're probably going to, because of the broken trip, and it's just going to be an inconvenience for some of them, not all of them, right? So, that's really not a benefit to them. And again, I keep saying, really, the western suburbs are just being ignored here, right? You're talking about the Northside of Brisbane again on another review, which is fine for the people on the Northside of Brisbane. But again, the people in the western suburbs, whether from Jamboree through to through to probably Callum Vale and maybe even Runcorn and beyond, are really dipping out on all this investment that Brisbane City Council has made with their ratepayer dollars, right? Over the last, I don't know, what, eight years now? And finally, finally, we're actually going to see a metro actually running, right? Not practice running, a few people have seen those that have told me, but actually see a service, an ongoing regular service that's actually going to happen between, on the 169, between Rochdale and the university, which is fantastic in that respect. The other thing that came out of the briefing was that the negotiations for this deal that we're talking about today, or the delegation to consummate the deal, you can put it that way again, that only started in April. And when I asked, when should it have started for the new contract? Because the last one was in June 2019. Councillor Murphy said he would get back to me on when that actually was, should have potentially started and not just right at the last moment, within three months of Metro needing to start and the new contract needing to be facilitated. So, it's really interesting. I think it was more of a political ploy to just do it at the last moment, that you could wedge the state government with the best deal that you can get out of them, which, as Councillor Cassidy said, wasn't really a terrific deal. I remember Councillor Murphy saying that they wanted 100 million. Well, they didn't, and the state government wanted to give them 50 million, then it ended up being in-between, I suppose. So, but, and it's really disappointing that all this really wasn't considered and put into place before the Metro was about to start at the end of the year. Because it's, you know, I would have thought that these sort of issues should have been done and settled and negotiated and settled, you know, at least 12 months out, if not two years out, so that you knew where you were, you knew what funding you needed and the state government knew what funding it was going to cost to operate the Metro, because it was important for the Metro. And again, it was a $1.5 billion investment, the biggest, probably the biggest investment for many, many years for this council, other than the tunnels, I suppose, back in the 2010s through to 2015s or whatever, they completed themselves. But it was really important that you should have done your due diligence so that you knew where you were going, you knew what you were going to get, so you knew the operation money you had to run Metro, which quite frankly, you did at the last three months under a political wedge. And we all saw that play out in the papers and on TV and on radio for the last couple of weeks. And I knew straight away, the first time I saw that sort of the backflip on the 50-cent fare thing, was, I thought, here we go, this is a political wedge, this is what they're doing. They're always probably planning to do this. And it's really sad to sort of see that. And it probably cost the, probably cost the ratepayers of Brisbane some money there, some considerable amount of money, because you didn't negotiate a really top deal that you probably could have if you had taken a bit more time to leading up to that operational commencement. So, it's really, but there's plenty of capacity out there, by the way, because you only have to come to the, for the 50-cent fares for the buses, you only have to come out to the Anala bus interchange to see the high-frequency 100, two or three buses that are actually there, dropping a few people off, picking a few people up. And honestly, the bus is probably not even 75% full, and this is at peak time. This is at peak time. Just come out, Councillor Murphy, come out any morning, just you pick one, and you will see the capacity that we have on the 100 as it comes from Callum Vale through to Anala. And you can see what spare capacity there is. You talk about 25% of the bus routes that actually are at capacity at the moment, but you don't talk about the 75 that are probably nowhere near it. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Huang.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I rise to speak in support of this motion. And I would like to start by congratulating the people of Brisbane. And we have secured a great deal for the people of Brisbane. It is a good outcome, it's a right outcome. But also, I'd like to start by commending the good work of our Lord Mayor and also Councillor Murphy in successfully negotiated and pushed for a fair deal for the people of Brisbane. Not just for the commuters, because we know the public transport is not only affecting the commuters, but also our transport network and city overall. And I also agree with the Premier, it is a big deal for the people. And I must say, it is the...
Councillor Huang, can you please just press your microphone?
Oh, sorry.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. Yeah, okay, thanks. Yep, well, it is a good mix of funding, between 75% to 25%. I just came back from a local government, Australian Local Government Association, AGM. And in fact, I think Brisbane is only the only local government provides public transport compared to all other local governments in Australia. And it is great to see that, you know, since the last agreement, which was 75-25, the share of the payment has increased on council's side, not the state's side. And now we restore back to 75%, 25%, and that is the right outcome. And although I think, you know, it is not totally satisfactory to us because compared to other cities where the states pay 100% of their public transport, we are still making a 25% contribution. But as the Lord Mayor say, we want to make our public transport better and a good model for not only in Queensland but across Australia. So, it is a win for everyone. And can I say, I, oh, sorry, Councillor Strunk is not here. I was listening to Councillor Strunk, and he has talked, you know, he has the same argument for the last few budget meetings that, you know, what does Metro do for, you know, places without Metro? But, yeah, but the fact is, this agreement is of citywide importance. It is not just for localized importance. So, it is a deal for all bus and ferry public transport network across the city, not just for Metro. But, you know, if his logic upholds, then why do I have to vote for ferries, you know? There's none of the stops in Magarika for any ferry services. So, we should realise, it is important, that it is for citywide importance. And Councillor Strunk also talked about a lack of investment in public transport. In fact, I think he just pointed out, you know, the state government wasn't doing their duty because if a state government has continued to invest in public transport in Brisbane and then all the things he mentioned wouldn't have happened. So, I think this contract is important because it also provides foundation for new northside public transport solutions in this contract. So, it is important that we remember that Brisbane City Council, especially in the last 20 years under successive LNP administrations, are the ones actually push for public transport network and also other infrastructure network in Brisbane. So, I would like to congratulate. And well, before I finish, I would like to still talk about Metro because fortunately, Magarika was one of the important base for Metro. Not only we have a metro, two metro stations, Amal Plains and Upper Mount Gravette, but also the Rochdale Depot happens to be in Magarika Ward. So, it is not, well, we shouldn't underestimate the economic and employment values of a public transport network. So, take Magarika Ward and Brisbane Metro Depot and stations, for example. The terminal station, Amal Plains, not only located next to Gateway, but it is also a junction between Gateway, South East Freeway, Logan Motorway and Castles from Mount Gravette to Kapalaba Road connections. So, that is an important junction for major arterial roads. But also, it's next to Brisbane Technology Park and Magarika Ward happens to have one of the highest student population, both local and international. So, having a good, workable public transport, especially with Metro, is going to provide important employment and also economic opportunities for the area. And I would like to just close by, once again, thank Lord Mayor and Councillor Murphy for your hard work and congratulate the people of Brisbane because by having this contract negotiated, the Metro will be able to start up and running in October and we'll see a further development of networks across the city. And I just encourage all the councils to get on board to this important contract. Thank you.
Further speakers. Councillor Collier.
Thanks very much, Sharon. What we're being asked to vote on today as councillors is, I think, a bit of a moonshot. We know where we're going to end up with a $1.5 billion black hole at least in the Brisbane Metro project, and the ratepayers of Brisbane are the people who are picking up the tab. But today, we are being asked to sign off on a delegation to let LNP politicians alone decide in secret what they think is the best deal for the people of Brisbane. Well, I do not trust for one second for them to negotiate on my behalf for the best deal, not one bit. This LNP council's credibility under this Lord Mayor is completely shot because there has been a systemic obsession with a select few extremely expensive pet projects. These LNP pet projects blow the council's budget and they don't deliver value for money for the people of Brisbane. Just look at projects like Kingford Smith Drive, the LNP's Five Green Bridges for $550 million, Mogul Road and now the Metro. All of these projects are the LNP's legacy. It's the LNP's legacy of blowouts, and they have one thing in common, that this Lord Mayor has his hands all over every single one. So, I want to share with the chamber a story about a Vietnam vet, who I know, who lives in Bolimba. He can't get to the shops at Cannon Hill on a Sunday to do his shopping, pick up his groceries, catch up with his mates and get out and about because there's no bus to get there. So, what I don't cop is that this deal is going to make things better for him. What I don't cop is that this deal, we're being asked to delegate power to a select few LNP politicians and apparently that's going to improve public transport services in Brisbane. I don't think so. I certainly don't cop. The Lord Mayor authorising spending what we were told was at least $100,000 on ads alone, on an overtly political campaign during a state election year. I don't cop that that is good value for money and I don't think that that is going to result in better public transport services for our suburbs. We should have spent that on buses. You're absolutely right, Councillor Cassidy. We have, of course, on this side of the chamber stated our public support for additional funding from the Queensland Government to get additional bus services right across the suburbs of Brisbane. But today, despite what the LNP say, we clearly aren't voting on that. We aren't voting on the deal itself. We are voting to give the power to a select few LNP politicians in a closed-door meeting. Given their track record, do I trust them? Not with their track record, not for one minute. I remain yet to be convinced that due to this deal from the council's side, we'll see improvements in the suburbs. I remain yet to be convinced that Wyndham Road's gridlock is going to be unlocked by the LNP council putting on a Metro to take people from Eight Mile Plains to Uni. The solution, of course, broadly, is to make fares low-cost and invest in frequent and reliable services. So, we do support the state government's 50-cent fares. And personally, I think that's one of the most incredible policies. It is a game changer. It addresses both cost-of-living relief that is so sorely needed in this time. And I guess, you know, on one hand, you've got the state government going, we're going to do absolutely everything we can, we're going to make public transport fares so much cheaper. I couldn't tell you, people are falling over themselves to come up to myself and, you know, my local state member to say, this is going to change the game. Our family is going to be able to save so much money because of this public transport policy. Thank you. And then on the other hand, you've got the LNP council who say, don't worry, we're going to spend $100,000 on a couple of ads. Like, the difference couldn't be clearer. So, the Queensland Government's pulling every single lever available to them, but the LNP won't step up and do their part. Today, the LNP want us to vote on giving them power by forging ahead with their only solution that you have on the table, their pet project, their Metro, their sole and single idea that they have to fix traffic congestion in every suburb of Brisbane. I have no, that is not going to work, and I have no idea why this LNP council is so ideologically opposed to investing in suburban public transport services. They have demonstrated time and time again that when the LNP are in power, you're in administration, you control the purse strings, you have the ability and the means to do it. But this LNP council make the choice to sit back and do nothing. So, today, the LNP are asking us, in all of the context of that, to trust them, to get the best possible deal. They are asking us to trust them, to roll out the Metro and think that everything is going to be okay. But there's no funding for new suburban bus routes. Why on earth would we trust them? Agreements at all levels of government take time to finalise and negotiate. I appreciate that, I get that. But as it's been explained to us and the people of Brisbane by the LNP so far, is that this council side of the deal is solely about saving face for the Lord Mayor's Metro and not much else. What's the alternative? Well, we need more suburban bus routes, we need to connect the links. We need bikeways, we need footpaths, we need active transport solutions. And all of this has to be a holistic approach, part of a broader plan to fix traffic congestion and get cars off the roads. For this council, this deal is not that. I don't trust they'll do the other stuff that's actually required to fix traffic congestion. And there has been so much talk about the deal itself, but we may never see it. The people of Brisbane may never see it because today, we're being asked to let a select few LNP politicians make decisions in secret. And I don't think that... few L N P politicians make decisions in secret, and I, I don't think that that is the right approach.
Further speakers, councillor Wolf.
Thanks, Madam Chair. I rise to speak in support of this motion. And it's quite sad to hear that councillor, councillor Collier doesn't trust us over this side of the chamber. Given that the people of Brisbane and the residents of Brisbane clearly did trust us when they voted for us in March. So this new bus funding agreement is, is excellent. We all know Brisbane is one of Australia's fastest-growing cities, and one of the most efficient ways to reduce congestion is to get more people on buses, Brisbane buses, and more people on the Brisbane metros. That's why we need to make public transport services more frequent, more often, to more places. The introduction of the Brisbane Metro, along with the additional services that this agreement funds, ensures that that will happen. Shirena Council are proud that we've secured this outcome with the state government, and this joint agreement represents a record investment in Brisbane buses and the delivery of the fully-electric, high-capacity, turn-up-and-go Brisbane Metro, giving us greater flexibility to deliver more services, especially during peak periods. So why do we need the change? Well, Brisbane is the only Queensland council that helps subsidise public transport. In 2023-24, we invested $140 million to subsidise our public transport network. This new heads of agreement commits both parties, state and council, to the key principles of this new contract. This means we have a long-term deal for the future of Brisbane buses and the Brisbane Metro. This is a fairer deal for the Brisbane residents. That means the state are stepping up to increase their investment in our public transport network. It wasn't fair that council had to pay for the Brisbane Metro services without the right to retain the revenue generated by the service. This deal means that the state will pay for the operation of the Brisbane Metro and keep the revenue. It's really, it is really important for our network continues to grow with us, so the Shirena Council will regularly review the network to ensure that we add capacity where it is needed and improve connections between different modes. To tackle congestion, we need our public transport network to be reliable and efficient, and delivering bus priority infrastructure in key corridors can help achieve this. I am particularly delighted to see the early introduction in October of the Brisbane Metro vehicles on the 169 bus route from the University of Queensland in the Walter Tail Award. In preparation for the Brisbane Metro rollout, the University of Queensland's Lakes Station has undergone a remarkable upgrade as part of the Brisbane Metro project, making a significant milestone in our city's transit evolution. I was delighted to attend the opening of the U Q station earlier this year on April 15th, and this station now boasts enhanced capacity and modern amenity, including the new charging infrastructure for the electric metros. Situated in the heart of the University of Queensland St Lucia campus, this upgrade is crucial, given that the campus is one of Brisbane's busiest hubs outside of the CBD, with projections indicating an increase in services from 910 to 1,110 per weekday, and a capacity to jump from 75,000 to 115,000 passengers daily. The impact on accessibility and efficiency cannot be overstated. Madam Chair, and furthermore, the Brisbane Metro itself represents a significant leap forward in urban transport planning. U Q Lake Station plays a critical role by providing services from the Royal Brisbane Women's Hospital to the University of Queensland St Lucia campus. Designed to integrate seamlessly with existing bus services, the metro will boost busway capacity by 30%, accommodating an additional 30.4 million passengers annually. This not only promises enhanced connectivity, but also underscores our commitment to sustainable transport solutions. Due to the constrained parking and traffic congestion that does occur around U Q, a higher proportion of students, academics, and workers are expected to travel by public or active transport to U Q campus in the future. So U Q Lake Station is ready to roll, and now includes a wider boardwalk behind the Northern Platform, providing ample standing room, viewing platforms, and amenity improvements overlooking the beautiful University of Queensland Alumni Gardens. The station now offers improved connections to renew and improve pedestrian pathways east and west of the Northern Platform, and reconfiguration of the dedicated cyclist facilities, including improved connections between U Q and Dutton Park via the Eleanor Chanel Bridge. As we look forward to the metro's commencement in October, it is clear that Brisbane is on the brink of significant public transport change. By consolidating services along the dedicated busway, including weekend operations, the metro will streamline, streamline travel across the city and into the suburbs. It represents a comprehensive network solution that links seamlessly with other modes of transport. This includes trains, buses, reinforcing Brisbane's status as a progressive and connected city. Ahead of the Queensland state election in October, the state government will enter into caretaker mode from September. Hence, if a new agreement was not reached before the caretaker period, Brisbane Metro Services would not have been able to start later this year as planned. So I would also like to thank the Lord Mayor, councillor Murphy, all councillor officers who have worked and continue to work tirelessly to deliver this bus contract that commits both parties, state and council, to improvements for the people of Brisbane. Thank you.
Further speakers, councillor Jonghwa.
Thank you, Chair. I rise to speak on the motion. Firstly, we have a massive issue as per what councillor Nicole Johnson and councillor Jared Cassidy have highlighted again today, with a lack of transparency regarding delegation. This is significant and raises if this contract is even valid. Once again, the, the lack of transparency is woeful. Our community deserves full transparency and accountability for what we do in this place, not closed doors in E and C meetings that decide everything of substance. Setting aside, it's positive to see the state government and council administration coming together to better fund Brisbane's public transport system. It's in desperate need. Right now, public transport isn't a real option for so many people. You can't rely on a bus route that only runs every hour or two and stop running at 7:00 PM. It's no wonder so many Brisbane residents still choose to drive. We know our community is desperate for well-connected, high-frequency bus network. The recent Guardian article headlines reads, "Half of Australians in the Five Largest Cities Live Too Far From Public Transport to Ditch Cars." This is woeful. A new international report, the INRICS Global Traffic Scorecard, analysed traffic congestion data from more than 900 cities around the world. It showed that on, on a yearly average, Brisbane was the worst for congestion in Australia and the 12th worst in the world, worse than Bangkok and Rome, the worst of any city in Australia. The Climate Council have also recently released a report showing that Brisbane has the worst access to all-day, frequent public, public transport of any major city in the country. Only a third of residents can walk to public transport then, that relies, sorry, that runs reliably compared to roughly half of Adelaide and Melbourne. The report found that access to good public transport services in Brisbane ends eight kilometres from the CBD. Our Greens' vision is to transform our city with free, frequent, accessible public transport for everyone. We want our community to move around our city with ease, free ourselves from hours of being stuck in traffic. In the last 10 years, the L N P council has created just one new frequently bus service in the Gap Award. This is only because of Greens' sustained pressure. Over their 20 years in power, they've wasted billions of dollars on road widening and toll road projects that only make traffic worse. It induces demand. If you add space for cars, then more people will use cars to get around. We want every Brisbane resident to have frequent, reliable buses. We want a bus network that gives everyone the freedom to leave their cars at home. This council's vision for transport has been stuck in the past for way too long. I'm pleased to see investment in public transport considering it's been so underfunded in the past. This funding is key to the operation of the metro. It's imperative that the L N P administration get it right. We need a comprehensive bus network review to expand the high-frequency bus network so that people can actually rely on public transport instead of their cars. We want to boost the network in a way that complements metro at a fraction of the cost. Better public transport helps everyone. It takes cars off the road and makes our streets quieter and safer. It cuts climate pollution and revitalises local shopping strips. Please use this money wisely and listen to the people of Brisbane. They know the failure in this system. They live and breathe it every day in their neighbourhood and when they're moving around our city. We had a bunch of suggestions for improving the bus network that we took to the last election. We'd be happy for you to steal our homework. On the inner north, west of, for example, the 380 along Musgrave Road and Waterworks Road, the 390 along Quelven Grove, Inogra and Sanford Road, and the 470 along Milton Road, all need to become reliable, high-frequency routes, running at least every 15 minutes. Residents in Barden, Ashgrove, and Inogra are also crying out for frequent, reliable connection to Twong and Indrapili that doesn't force them to go by the city centre. Lastly, as the Climate Council says, more shared and active transport is a win-win for millions of people who live in our biggest cities that slash climate pollution from transport, cuts the cost of living, makes our streets safer and less congested, and cleans up our air. Thank you, Chair.
Further speakers. Councillor Griffiths.
Oh, I was going to let councillor Murphy speak. That would have been interesting to hear councillor Murphy speak, hear the actual chair of transport speak. He has lots to say in the media, has lots to say about everything in the media, apparently. I rise to speak on this item. I can hear some, some, I can hear some murmurings from that side of the chamber.
I don't think the chair could.
Did you hear that, Madam Chair? No, I didn't. Oh, okay. Okay. Tone deaf on that side, I get it. And welcome back during our break. Isn't it nice to be back with all the kids in the chamber, talking about this little, little political move or manoeuvre, whatever you, you know, however you want to see it. I just want to say that, first off, listening to the L N P on that side of the chamber, you would think that they were the only people elected into this chamber. Well, you're not. That's why you have us here, and our views are just as valid, and we represent residents just as much as you do. And I suppose that's what concerns me about what is proposed here, is that we are taking a document about services for the residents of Brisbane, and we're delegating that away from this chamber to a group of people who are totally committed to the L N P. Not committed to the residents of Brisbane, certainly not committed to my residents, not committed to providing more services in the suburbs, because there will be no new services in the suburbs. They're just committed to managing a politic, a situation politically. And that's what's happening here by this delegation. And it was fascinating, because councillor Johnson jumped up and questioned whether this delegation is actually done properly, whether it's legal. And time will tell councillor Johnson whether you are right or not, but we've been through this once before in this term, less than six months ago, when the debacle of our swearing-in, we all got called back, because you'd accepted the advice that hadn't been checked, and then we went through another L N P debacle. And speaking of debacles, and Lord Mayor made references before, the previous review I was around for. And the previous review and the previous restructure of our transport system was a complete stuff-up, from beginning to end. It was a complete stuff-up, and residents were angry. And residents are going to be angry with these changes here. And the very thing that we're doing with this overall delegation is, we are not telling residents what's coming their way. We are shamming residents. And a whole lot of people on that side of the chamber, all L N P puppets, are sitting there going along with the little circus of going, yes, this is fine, we'll sham our residents, because we're told to sham our residents. We don't fit into that chamber. We don't fit into that way of thinking. I actually would like my residents to know what cuts are coming their way. I think they have a right to know, and this meeting should have been where that was tabled. The offices know, the offices are already planning for removing bus stops. The design work's happening. It's happening. Well, certainly on the south side, it's happening. The north side, apparently we went through the bus review, and now the bus review doesn't apply to the north side. How convenient is that going into a state election? What a sham, what a political sham, what a management politically. But, but the changes are going to go, go ahead on the south side. For me, when I put the review that you put up out for consultation, there was nothing but anger, aggro from residents. Aggro about the cuts they're getting, the merging of services, the loss of services, and the fact that we're actually not going to provide more services to areas that actually need more services.
That's right.
All that information's here, it's all been sent on. And really, when I saw this special meeting come through, I thought, yep, they'll be giving us the bus review. Nope, no bus review, no information for residents. Oh, we'll do it selectively, we'll do it secretly, we'll put this out in a scam-sham This is a scam-sham way. We're doing over our residents. And I hear this, I heard the Lord Mayor, and it just stuns me, it's like this, this double talk. He talks about, well, this is fair, you know, we've got to have half-half funding, you know, this makes it fair. You think, yeah, I don't disagree with that logic. Why didn't he use that logic with the building of the metro? Why didn't we use that logic with the $1.5 billion we're spending on the metro? Because the result of that spend is that all our offices, all their work has been cut back in the suburbs, because we're trying to pay for these projects which essentially weren't council projects. They should have been projects done in conjunction with state and federal government. So I get very confused by the Lord Mayor's logic of going it alone with this project. We're going to spend $1.5 billion doing this, but yes, no, we want them to step up and pay half here. And that logic is just repeated over and over, depending on what, what argument the Lord Mayor is making, but it's not consistent. So for my residents, I say, you're being scammed with this review. You are being scammed. There are changes coming. L N P councillors know what those changes are, the staff know what those chambers are, we as elected members do not know what they are. And frankly, I think best decisions are made when they're done in a transparent environment, where we all have a say, we all get to look at it, and we all get to tick off on it and give our feedback. And that is not what's happening now. So I worry for the, my residents in terms of the, the services are going to be cut. I worry that accessibility isn't being taken into account. I worry that, that still, and Lord Mayor admitted this just before, he said, on 25% of our routes, we have increased the numbers. Well, that means on 75% of our routes, we haven't even met our target. On 75% of our routes, we aren't even coming close to meeting our target. Let's hope the 50-cent fares work, but the feedback, once again, that I was getting from my residents is, this, these changes need to be transparent, they need to be upfront, we need to be doing better for Brisbane, and everything I've heard today is not saying we're going to be doing better for Brisbane. We've got, Lord Mayor's got a $75 million pay cheque from the state government to help with his, his budget, which is in dire straits, to get us over the line this financial year. That's what we've got here. And I think residents are going to be very unhappy with the outcome, and I will invite the Lord Mayor and councillor Murphy. And I will invite the Lord Mayor and councillor Murphy. You can come to the public meetings with residents when they realise what is happening. You can come along. Okay, thank you.
Further speakers? councillor Johnston.
Oh, still councillor Murphy, the transport chair hides, hides at his desk. He hasn't been here in the chamber. I rise to speak on the motion before us today. And I'm going to start with the governance issues because I don't think that was quite well understood today and I think there's a pretty serious problem. Firstly, far from what you'd have if you were listening to the LMP backbench councillors, you'd be thinking that perhaps we're approving a new bus network and a new bus system today. We are not. The motion before us today essentially is providing for a delegation, doesn't say who is delegating what, for a new contract in accordance with a head of agreement set out in attachment A. Now, attachment A is a non-binding agreement between council and the state government. It's not a contract, it's not a set arrangement, it's not anything. It's a non-binding agreement. The parties to that agreement, which is in the attachment of the materials before us today, are, and I note for the record, the state of Queensland acting through the Department of Transport and Main Roads and Brisbane City Council trading as Transport for Brisbane. E and C is not mentioned in this heads of agreement at all. Now, the problem we have here today is that councillor Murphy and the Lord Mayor are acting contrary to the approval by the Establishment and Coordination Committee. In the papers we've been provided today, the Establishment and Coordination Committee signed off on a recommendation. Now, that is on the first page of the document we were provided and it states as follows, that council resolves in accordance with the draft, draft resolution set out at attachment one. That draft resolution at attachment one provides the following. It provides that council approves the following. Council one approves entering into a HOA as set out in attachment two. Two approves entering into a funding agreement set out attachment three. And three delegates its power under section 242 of the City of Brisbane Act 2010 to the Establishment and Coordination Committee, the power to enter into the contracts provided they are generally in accordance with the HOA set out in attachment two, on the general conditions of the delegation set out in attachment four. Now, the motion that has been put forward before us today does not reflect the decision of the Establishment and Coordination Committee. That recommendation has been altered by councillor Murphy and the Lord Mayor and has been brought forward to this chamber for our consideration today. The delegation is not in accordance with the requirements under the City of Brisbane Act, section 238.1E. And that is that it should be delegated to a range of different people, including the mayor or the CEO, but in this case, the Establishment and Coordination Committee report, Establishment and Coordination Committee. Now, the big problem with all of this is that for some unknown reason councillor Murphy and the Lord Mayor have deviated from the legal recommendations signed off by Brisbane City Legal and approved by E and C. Why they have done this, I don't know. But the heads of agreement document that we are being asked to approve a delegation to sign off on is actually between Brisbane City Council and the state government. So council is simply delegating its authority to council. So the Lord Mayor is not going to have any authority to sign off on this, E and C is not going to have any authority to sign off on this because the resolution brought forward by councillor Murphy and the Lord Mayor is not in accordance with what was approved by the Establishment and Coordination Committee report. And the Lord Mayor will no doubt jump up when he summarises and say, I'm all wrong, but I, I've looked at this very, very carefully. Because what we are doing here today is not approving a new bus network, not approving new buses, not approving a contract for bus services. We are approving a delegation. So the only responsibility we have as councillors today is to ensure that that delegation is made in accordance with our statutory obligations as councillors. Now, it's pretty clear to me that that has not happened. It is very clear that the resolution, and this is what section 238 of the City of Brisbane Act says, that the council must resolve to delegate the powers to one of those five other organisations. And that should be the E and C committee, if this is the intention, as it appears to have been when E and C considered the matter. However, that is not what is being done today. The Lord Mayor's motion that he and councillor Murphy have brought forward does not reference E and C, does not accord with the recommendation put to E and C, which had been through City Legal. So we know that City Legal had reviewed the, the special meeting requirements. And this is what City Legal, the acting chief legal counsel of City Legal and the chief financial officer were consulted and they have ticked off on a motion that is not being presented to council today. Now, no doubt the Lord Mayor will stand up and say, well, we intend E and C to sign off on it. Sure, I can see that's, I can see from the issue going to the Establishment and Coordination Committee, that is what council intended, that is what E and C intended, that is what the officers have recommended, that is what has been legaled, that is not what is being done today. And that is because, for some reason, the Lord Mayor and councillor Murphy have not used the wording approved by the Establishment and Coordination Committee as outlined in the draft recommendation and approved by the Establishment and Coordination Committee. They have brought forward a motion that does not properly delegate the power under section 238 of the City of Brisbane Act. Now, I have been through a number of these problems with the LMP. Obviously, the, the most recent for councillors was the swearing-in. But the other one in recent memory is the hundreds and hundreds of leases and land disposals that were signed off without the appropriate authority as well. Now, basically, flowing from this decision today, this is about authorising future contracts about bus services of which we have no knowledge or information. And this authorisation, if it is not done properly, means that Brisbane City Council has not entered into formal contracts for the delivery of bus services in Brisbane legally. Now, all I asked for earlier today was some, someone to check because I would have thought that there is a way to fix this and make sure it is done properly because it is not being done properly without question. And the Lord Mayor is not going to skate by by standing up and saying, oh, we were meant to do it. It, it's in the, it's in the E and C report. Yes, it is in the E and C report. The problem is, it's not in the motion before us. And for this council to delegate its authority under the City of Brisbane Act, we must resolve to delegate that authority to the Lord Mayor or the CEO or the Establishment and Coordination Committee. And that is not what's being done. And when you look at the heads of agreement, what is, what, what this motion is doing today is simply delegating the power back to the City of Brisbane. Because that is who the heads of agreement is between, Brisbane City Council and the Queensland State Government. So I don't really think this is going to end up being legally valid. That's my strong feeling about this. I'll say just a few brief remarks about the bus arrangements. The sham and scam line councillor Griffiths, I think I completely support. For years now, Brisbane City Council has been promising better bus services, but they can't be open and transparent with this council about what is being delivered. There are bus cuts for residents in my area and now, as I understand it, this multi-year project of Brisbane City Council's for a bus network review was only about the south side. Yet we're getting bus cuts on the south side. We, as I understand it, the council thinks that it's a brilliant idea that we have the same level of funding that we had under the last agreement for this agreement and the nearly $2 billion asset that council spent all its money on is being handed over to the state government and we're getting $75 million back to run a bus service that we never got approval for in the first place and number two, never had the capacity to operate. This is the dodgiest organisation this LMP administration have ever seen.
Further speakers? No further speakers? I'll call on the Lord Mayor.
Okay, thank you, madam chairman. Could we have some water, please? You know, there are some of those people who can never admit when they got it wrong. They're just, no matter what evidence is provided, no matter what new things come to light, they will never, ever admit that they got it wrong. And councillor Cassidy is that guy. And today it has been extraordinary to hear the way that he has responded. It's been like, look, it's been art. It's actually been something that I've thoroughly enjoyed watching because it's, it's like something that you would never imagine happening, Cirque du Soleil on steroids. So what we've seen here is that the state government has initiated a monumental 180-degree turnaround in their position on public transport. It's a 180-degree turnaround on Brisbane Metro and it's a 180-degree turnaround on funding for public transport in Brisbane. And let's, let's put it this way, the state government went from trying to stop and block metro, from delaying metro, from doing everything possible to hold up to the, to hold up the project, to now, this is a joint project and we are so excited about it and we can't wait to see it happen. That's a monumental shift. The state government went from shortchanging Brisbane residents through the transport system, now to agreeing, not just now, but into the future for appropriate funding levels. Once again, a monumental turnaround. They, the state government went from not funding anything about metro, no funding at all for Brisbane Metro, to now funding 75% of all services, including Brisbane Metro services. That is a monumental shift in position. And councillor Cassidy wants us to believe that there's nothing special happening here, nothing to see here, and it's all very underwhelming. So what's changed to prompt this monumental shift in position and response from the state government? Well, it's really quite simple. And like, we've been alluding to this for years now. It's actually a really simple thing that's changed. We have a different transport minister and we have a different premier. Those two things have changed and that's where the monumental shift came. We now have two people that are willing to work with us because they can see, particularly in this electorally sensitive position that they're in, that what we're doing will benefit the people of Brisbane. What we're doing will boost the transport network. What we're doing will be a good outcome. And they decided that they better get out of the way and get on board. And I commend them for that and I thank them for that. It has been a monumental shift. Now councillor Cassidy and Labour are so determined to never admit that they're wrong that they've come up with some really weird positions today. The same people that were outraged that we would dare to speak out and criticise the state government are now complaining that we didn't push hard enough in criticising the state government. So on the one hand, they were incensed and outraged that we would dare mount a campaign and make public comments criticising state government transport funding and their commitment to transport. They were outraged by it. Yet today they're like, oh, you didn't try hard enough, should have pushed harder, should have criticised more, should have done more, should have run a longer campaign, shouldn't have given in. And so it is really quite extraordinary, it's bizarre. So they say, how dare you criticise the state government? But today it's like, how dare you settle for so little? But while we're looking at councillor Cassidy's weird logic, try this one on. He's basically suggested that the premier and the minister for transport are wrong. And let me explain. Councillor Cassidy is saying the opposite to what the premier and the minister are saying on some critical points here. The premier said that this is a big deal for Brisbane residents. That is an exact quote. That's what he said on Monday. Councillor Cassidy said this is a dud deal for Brisbane residents. He's saying the premier is wrong. Councillor Cassidy didn't say it's a big deal for Brisbane residents, he says it's an underwhelming deal for Brisbane residents. He said, there's not much new in this deal. He's calling the premier out, he's saying the premier's wrong. The premier says the metro vehicles are impressive. Once again, an exact quote, impressive was the word that he used. Councillor Cassidy said the vehicles are rubbish, they're expensive and people will have to stand up on them. He's saying the premier's wrong. The premier said, and I quote, that taken together, Brisbane Metro, 50 cent fares and Cross River Rail means a revolution is coming to public transport in the South East. Councillor Cassidy says the people of Brisbane will be worse off because of Brisbane Metro. He's saying the premier is wrong. Minister Mellish doubled down on the premier's comments and said, and I quote, this will be a really great boost to our network going forward. Councillor Cassidy says the people of Brisbane will be worse off. So let me ask you, madam chair, who do you believe? Do you believe the premier or minister Mellish or do you believe councillor Cassidy? Who do you believe? Now, if those contradictions weren't enough, let's have a look at what he said about the Climate Council report. He said, oh, Brisbane's the worst when it comes to public transport. And he referred to the Climate Council report. Well, did anyone actually read the report? Or actually, at the least, did anyone read the article about the report? Because this is what the report said about the worst public transport suburbs in Brisbane. What are the worst public transport suburbs in Brisbane? Browns Plains, Beanley and the Hills District, like Ferny Hills and Irana Hills. What do all those suburbs have in common? They're not in Brisbane. They're not even in Brisbane. Councillor Cassidy has zero credibility on anything he says about this matter. What are the best suburbs for public transport? Indrapili? And these next two are my favourite. Yaronga and Anneli. The councillor who complains the most, the councillor who claims planes the most has some of the best public transport in the city. Wouldn't you believe? Hey, it's not my report. I didn't hear councillor Johnston quoting that report, I really didn't hear that. But...
Councillor Johnston?
What the report also says is, while big projects like Cross River Rail are important, sometimes simple investments like better buses and more bike paths make a bigger difference. So that's exactly what this deal helps us do. We're already building better bike paths and active transport connections and we'll continue that. But this deal allows us to deliver simple investments like better bus services. And so it's really clear that there's zero credibility in what councillor Cassidy has said today. But the final and most important thing that he said today just blew my mind. Now, we've been talking about Brisbane Metro for many years and he's been opposing it for many years and today he made a huge admission. He said, Brisbane Metro is a state project on a state asset. This is what we've been saying for years, not because we didn't think we... Not because we didn't think we should fund towards Brisbane Metro, but because we always thought the state government should fund Brisbane Metro, that they should pay their fair share. Not all of it, but at least put some funding in it, stop blocking it. And today, councillor Cassidy has said, this is a state project on a state asset. Hence, the state should fund it. That's effectively his position. So the state should fully fund Brisbane Metro is councillor Cassidy's position. While at the same time, he continues to oppose Brisbane Metro. So, look, it's nonsensical here, the arguments that we've heard put forward. Finally, I just want to thank councillor Murphy and his team for doing the heavy lifting on this. He's done an incredible job. His team has done an incredible job. It is a big deal for Brisbane and I want to personally thank councillor Murphy for the role that him and his office and his team in TFB have had in making this happen. Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'll now put the motion. All those in favour, say aye. Those against, no. The ayes have it.
Division.
Division has been called by councillor Wines and seconded by councillor Murphy. All those to the right and those against to the left. Clarks, please read the results.
Madam Chair, the ayes have it. The voting being 16 in favour and seven abstentions.
The motion is carried. Councillors, that now concludes the special meeting.